Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. I ask that you fill each of our hearts with your presence. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. With your presence there, do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman. We have two. Welcome.
Allers?
Present.
Deacon?
Here.
Henzley?
Present.
Lester?
Your.
Mealy? Schwartz?
Here.
Spencer?
Here.
Spicer?
Present.
Weisman?
Present.
Wright?
Present.
All right, we have quorum. Now move to item three, adoption of the agenda. Do you need a motion? Central section.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move Resolution RS 2023-25 under Presentations. So that would be item B.
Second.
All right, motion to amend the agenda, to move the resolution up so it will match with the discussion on the Y-Tech project. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, you've got the amended agenda. Any other changes to the agenda? Motion to adopt the amended agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Thanks, sir.
Second.
All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, I don't think we have any miscellaneous agenda items, no public hearings, no appointments tonight, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. Ms. Terry?
Thank you, Mrs. Terry.
Report in back. Thank you.
On the first page of the reports that are presented here, the first item is sales tax and use tax on this revenue model summary. Year-to-date so far, total collections are $581,738 over the budgeted projections. We have some overages in other lines, but of more concern are the deficiencies, of which the biggest is the fees, licenses, and permits. If you go to the second page, it starts the detail on this, and from here you can see where the deficiencies are in the individual line items. In particular, for franchise and utility tax, we have a deficiency of just over $94,000 on the telephone and cell utility. We've talked about this on multiple occasions, and we have made modifications to attempt to correct that in the FY '24 proposed budget. There's also a deficiency in the fees and licenses for building construction fees of just over $82,000. We've also attempted to address that to a degree in the FY '24 presented budget. The next page is just the finishing up of the individual line items, and if there's anything specifically here that council would like to address, I'd be happy to speak about it. Next you go into the sales tax revenues. These are collections for the June 2023 timeframe. Collections for the general fund sales tax, $1,164,947, which is just under $17,000 over the projected for the month. In total year-to-date, there's the $581,738 over the projections that we were talking about. Each of the individual capital improvement tax, park sales tax, and public safety tax have also come in above projections. And you can see the totals there, $161,000 on the capital improvement tax, and total year-to-date, $583,000 on the parks capital, the park sales tax year-to-date, and public safety tax year-to-date, just under $66,000. Next three, next four pages actually show the individual sales tax, and you can kind of see the trends there. The final page is the estimated fund balance, and this is the report that we've spoken about, and recently during budget meetings talked about modifying. So you'll see in the middle section of the page, those items highlighted in yellow are pending potential supplemental appropriations for a variety of accounts. Staff is hoping that we're able to cover a majority of those, the ones with the double asterisk. And if that happens, we do still anticipate having to come to council for supplemental appropriation on the self-funded health insurance. I don't have any figures more recent than the $1.4 million that I previously provided to council. So at this point, the current fund balance, taking into account all of the non-highlighted items, is 15.56%. If we are able to cover all of the items that have the double asterisk on them, and only have to utilize funds for the $1.4 million, that would be 11.8%. And if we are unable to cover the items with the double asterisk, it would be 10.6%. I do want to point out that this model does not take several things into account. It doesn't take into account any of the revenue overages that we collect in the current fiscal year, and we just talked about that on the very first page of this report, that there are anticipated overages of, I think, $1.8 million. And then it also doesn't take into account any of the potential expense savings that we will have from the individual city departments, keeping in mind that those savings are potentially going to be used to cover the items that have the double asterisk in the highlighted section. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on finance?
Has the fund balance ever been below 15%? I mean, has we hit 10% before?
Not that I'm aware of. But again, keep in mind, there are things that are not reflected in that number. One of the biggest is the overage in revenue that appears on the first page of almost $1.9 million.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, so, thank you. All right, that takes us to item eight. Announcements by mayor, council, and staff committees. Administration Committee, Councilwoman Ward.
Yes, we do not have a regularly scheduled meeting this Wednesday, the 6th. We will instead have our regularly scheduled meeting on October 4th across the hall at 7:30 a.m., unless otherwise notified.
Anything going on in your world, Councilman Hinton?
Not much in terms of a finance committee update, but for budget committee, our next meeting is this Thursday, the 7th, at 5:30 p.m. in this room. The meetings following that meeting will be on the, on Monday, the 11th, Thursday, the 14th, Thursday, the 21st. At this point, all at 5:30 p.m. here.
Thanks. Thank you. So that takes care of two and three. Public Safety, Councilman Spicer.
September 28th, 7:30, Police Training Room.
All right. And finally, Public Works and Planning, Councilman Spencer.
The next meeting will be September 4th, 7:30 here in the council chambers. September 14th, excuse me. My apologies. Yeah, next.
Any other committee?
Just had a quick announcement. Firefighters local 671 will be selling JCFB Fight for a Cure t-shirts again this year. All the proceeds will be going to a wife of a Richmond Heights firefighter who's battling breast cancer. So you can go to a website called stores.incsoft.com, and I'll send a link out to all my colleagues if you all agree with that. It's a worthy cause for breast cancer awareness month. And thanks for our fire chief for supporting that.
Order to be in by September 13th, noon, or you're out of luck. So if you see our firefighters wearing those pink shirts during breast cancer awareness month, they do that as a uniform, except you have to.
Great. Thanks. Any other announcements? All right, takes us to item nine, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. We've made the adjustment to the agenda here, opening it up with the public hearing on the proposed Y-Tech application process. Anyone here to talk about that project? Welcome?
Thank you.
Identify yourself. Appreciate you being here.
Sure. My name's Curtis Knottswerner. I'm here representing MOCAP Development, and we are seeking a resolution of support for a, what we call elderly housing development. A little bit about MOCAP. MOCAP's been doing these types of projects for about 20 years. We've got 10 of them, five of them in Jeff City. We've got one in Lebanon, one in Liberty, and three in Washington, one that we're getting ready to start construction on there. We turned the Simonsen application in last year, and just with the timing of how these things, when the MHDC puts out the QAP, it was kind of a last-minute deal, so we didn't actually get in front of you guys to ask for a resolution last year. But here we are this year. So applications are due on September 22nd, and they've, MHDC has a scoring matrix, and one of the things that we have to get to score well is a resolution of support. The five deals that we have in Jeff City, we've got, if you guys aren't familiar with them, Chapel Hill 1, 2, and 3. They're, they're all elderly deals out there sort of by the mall, and then we've got Weather Rock Apartments 1 and 2. They're, they're family projects off of Roffy. The project that we're looking to turn in this year would be an elderly deal off Wildwood. It'd be a three-story building, two-bedroom, all two-bedroom, one-bath units, approximately 835 square feet. We would have, the rents will vary. We don't know for sure exactly where they'll be at, but some of the, you know, just we've got, kind of got to mix up the, oh, the, we call it kind of a rent matrix of, some of the rents will be market rate rents, some of the rents will be 60% AMI, some of the rents will be 30% AMI. And, you know, the market study kind of helps us determine that, and then just, you know, making the project financially feasible. Development costs approximately $15 million. We, we're, that's probably on the high end, which is probably somewhere between 13 and 15 million dollars. This will be age-restricted, 55 and up. Oh, God, I mean, I guess I could flip through some of these slides just here. That way you guys can see them. So if you, I don't know if you guys are, I wish I had a bigger screenshot of this. I thought about it after I sent it. Wildwood Drive is along the left side there. This is basically what I would call behind Lowe's, and north of the Diamonds subdivision. We have an 80-acre tract to land there. We thought this would be a good site for a MHDC project with apartments across the street. Currently, we would access the site off of Wildwood Drive. That's our plan. The, the road showing up there off of American is future if that 80 acres is developed into a subdivision. I think currently that's the plan for it, but, but there's nothing in stone. Our, our long-term plan would be the, the site to the east there, the building is, is in blue. It's not very, it's not very distinct there, but would be to do a Phase 1 in that location, and then potentially down the road, do a Phase 2 on that little piece of ground between the building and Wildwood. That's a rendering of, that property is actually in Liberty, Missouri. We finished that one last year. That's, that's typically about what they look like. It's very similar. Chapel Hill Commons 2 is also a, a three-story building that we have here in town that looks similar to this. And then this is a typical apartment unit layout, two bedrooms, living room, bathroom, laundry, kitchen. They're, they're really nice units. Typically, it is one resident per unit in most of our elderly deals. Some of them have two people living in them, but most of the time it's just one. Open for questions.
Okay, thanks. Questions or comments? Councilman Allers and Councilman Spencer.
Three questions. First one, is there usually a waiting list for your properties to get into?
So I just checked the rent roll today. Currently, like our Chapel Hill properties, 1, 2, and 3 are, they're all 100% full. And most of the time, we have a waiting list of plus or minus 50 people between the three properties. So I, I checked the other day. One of them had 17, one of them was in the, and the other two are in the low 20s.
Thank you. There are elevators in this, correct?
Yeah, this facility would be a, a three-story building, and it will be some, it'll be angled to some degree. I think Chapel Hill's like a, like a 30 or 45% degree angle. A lot of them that we build are, are L-shaped, 90s. And in the front, when you walk in, there's a, there's a common area. There's usually a little kitchenette area, an office, and a little bit of fact.
And the last one I had is usually on the outside, do you have like little areas, I'll say a common area, people could just sit outside, maybe converse, have a picnic tip for lunch? Is that generally included in some of your plans and all that?
Yes. We, we normally with the three stories, we'll, we'll build a courtyard, depending on how the building lays out, behind the building.
Thank you.
Councilman Spencer.
Thank you for bringing this project forward. Obviously, with our latest housing study, we are an aging community, and there is a need, obviously, you know, with your comments tonight, with the waiting list. Chapel Hill is a nice development, and it's quality. I really like the bungalow style, you know, the, the individual.
Yes, we do too.
So I don't know if that might be a possibility for Phase 2 at all, but.
It could be. We have, so we partner with Fairway Development out of Columbia on these things, and we talked about that initially. That was the initial floor plan that we looked at. And whenever we get into a site like we have here where it's, you know, got a lot of grade change, building knows is tough.
Sure. I understand.
And just with the current construction market, trying to have a competitive proposal, we've been leaning towards three-story buildings.
Good luck with this, with your efforts, and I appreciate that.
Other questions or comments? Councilman Miller.
Is this project on public transportation route?
Yes, there is. I looked at that. There is public transit along Wildwood. I don't know exactly where the stops are, but we looked at that briefly. Is that, that is also in the scoring matrix.
Also, anything else? All right, we are going to then go to item 14B, Resolution 2023-25.
A resolution supporting the Y-Tech application for Wildwood Canyon Senior Housing Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to turn over to Ms. Senzi in our Neighborhood Services Division, just going to do a kind of brief overview of that.
Just a, yeah, thank you. Just to add on to what Mr. Knottswerner explained about the housing development. It is a 55-plus senior housing development that's pursuing low income housing tax credits, otherwise known as Y-Tech. The proposed location is southeast of Wildwood Drive and American Avenue. It is currently zoned, which means that once it goes, the project is ready, it'll come back to council for approval at a future date. The housing study identifies a 12% senior population growth over the past decade, and the likeliness that this population sector will continue to influence demand on the housing market as older householders may seek to downsize or move into more affordable and/or accessible options. So I anticipate seeing more developments. There's the fiscal impact to the city. There's no direct fiscal impact. And a reminder that, that this application, this resolution is seeking jurisdictional support to get additional points on the low income housing tax credit application. I'd be happy to answer any process-oriented questions.
Any corrections of Ms. Senzi on Mr. Smith? All right, this will take motion to move it forward. Councilman Schwartz, thank you. Spicer, second. Any other comments on Resolution 2023-25? Need a roll call vote on that?
Allers?
Yes.
Deacon?
Aye.
Henzley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Resolution adopted.
Thank you. All right, also under that, we do have three people signed up to speak, so Mr.?
Denofa?
Denofa. There he is. Can you just identify yourself?
Steve Denofa. I live in Pitt Ward. And my purpose for coming here to talk is the 2023, whatever, 043, which is the Wardways Drive Off of Composting. I've looked at some of the information here. I don't know if you've seen this one. It's on your website called Active Submissions. And I, I just think that you've overlooked, I think the staff has overlooked, the most important thing, and that is city residents and the customers. We've been using the one that Chris Sheppert runs for probably 10 years. I don't know exactly how long that contract's running. I've, I've used it multiple times, and every time I'm out there, there are people out there. I've had no problems. I, I get the $200,000 on the bid, but I think you have to, you know, it's lowest and best bid, and I would encourage you to look at these more closely. I do believe it's a danger to take this kind of waste across that bridge. I do think when you have the spring and the fall, when there's a lot of cleanup going on, if you have flooding, you're not going to be able to use that facility. And I think really there, you could, you could cause an increase in burning if people choose not to drive over there to drop their stuff off. I know I would definitely consider doing that. I've got a hose, and I've got water, but some people may not. May give the fire department some more business. Anyway, I would just encourage you to take a look at this and, and talk to some of the citizens that are in your wards and see. Because I, a lot of people don't read the newspaper. They don't, I don't know where they get their news anymore. And I have a feeling that there are a lot of people that use that facility that don't know this is going on. And, and I think you could really cause, get some complaints from them. So again, I understand it's, that there are a couple hundred thousand dollars under Chris Sheppert's bill, or under Chris Sheppert's estimate. But, you know, when I look at experience and reliability, and I see on here that Corby has about 15 points, they've got 13.2, and All Seasons has 12.4, when they've been doing it for 10 years, how many complaints have you gotten about them? Have, have, how many, have you received complaints about these, this place? And just because it's a $200,000 less, I think, I don't think that's as important as providing the service that your customers, which are your voters, use. So I would encourage you to think again about this, and if you, if you need more time, that's fine. But I, I think it could really cause you some problems, and, and I've been very happy with the service. I think Chris has done an outstanding job, and I think if you delve into these bids more, I think you'll find that there's not $200,000. Anyways, if anybody's got.
Thanks for coming in. Any questions? Thanks for your comments. Next, we have Mr. Alfred. Just identify yourself. Thanks for being here.
I think everybody knows who I am, but.
People may not, just in case.
I'm Lee Alfred with Alfred Tree Service. I don't know that guy, but I like what he said. Good speaker. I don't, I saw the proposal on the last meeting. If you're going to compare apples to apples, we're probably almost the same price because winter hours, I mean, he's not open on Sundays at all, period. When the contract starts, he's not open on Sundays, okay? During the winter hours, which I don't know when that is, it's that daylight savings time. So again, does anybody know that? Because that wasn't discussed in the last, last meeting. But if it starts with, if his winter hours start with daylight savings time, within seven days after his contract starts, he's not open on weekends at all until next spring. So what days, if you work a 40-hour week, what days do you get to work on your yard at home? Saturday and Sunday. Where the place needs to be open the most gets closed. I can't, you know, I think, I don't think it's the right decision. I really don't. If, if we don't do it, we don't do it, or keep going with Sheppert. I don't much care for that man either. But if we have a weather event with my sites, they're going to stay open. They're not going to get run off. They're not going to lock, I'm not going to lock my gates. You know, if you guys have been through the ice storm, that was miserable. If you went to the tornado, that was bad. We will have the room to absorb that. And it's not going to cost the citizens any more money unless I have to start running the tub grinder 24 hours a day, which on a 42-acre lot, I don't see how that would even be possible. So I've seen sites in St. Louis. I've seen sites in Kansas City. I have studied this for the last 20 years. And I, it's the best bet, but I'm not the cheap guy. So. Ask questions, please ask.
All right, questions?
I am.
Thanks for being here.
All right.
Thank you. Then the last one we had sign up was Mr. Brian. Can you just identify yourself as well?
My name's Darryl Brian, and I'm coming in front of the council members today because I am totally against taking our yard waste across the Missouri River Bridge due to the fact of the hazard that the Missouri River Bridge already has. There's a couple of things that the council and the city of Jefferson needs to look over. One, this proposal that he's putting up, just like that gentleman just said. You know, when you're going to start closing, your money's not going to stop from him. He's going to still collect. The other thing is, is that I believe that you all were sent a copy that I sent to Emily. I posted on social media about Ray Wallace that used to work for you all, for the city of Jefferson. And Ray sent in on the contract of the Park and Recreation Department.
I would like to object to all of this testimony, as I don't want to become a witness to anything that's going to happen in court. I read that letter from Jason Paulsmeier, and I do not want to be a witness.
Okay.
I would just like for him to move on.
I mean, I think I should have the right to speak. I mean, you all work for us. I mean, really. I mean, that's how you all got voted in, right?
My argument is simply that this is, there is potentially a legal suit that is going on, and I don't want to be a witness to it.
There's not. It's an intimidation. I've already talked to two attorneys.
I'm going to ask our attorney for.
If you have the right to, to address the issue, any council member that doesn't want to be part of the discussion has the ability to dismiss themselves during this portion.
I will dismiss myself. Thank you.
All right, we'll give you a few extra seconds.
Well, that's fine, but my thing is, is that I brought this up to you all, that Ray Wallace used to work for you all, and he has went, and he sent in on the October meeting. And he called Todd Spalding, which Todd. And he called uh Todd Spalding, which Todd is off now for a month of leave, that citizens like me don't know why, but anyway, it's all boiling down to that Ray Wallace sent in on these contracts, okay? And now he's working for Corte Tree Service. So the citizens and everybody, we would like to know, I mean, and I've posted and I've had seen, I think citizens ought to know why the park and recreation contract went the way it hit. Also, the citizens would like to know that who's going to vote for this to go across the Missouri River Bridge, cause I've had many people reach out to me and contact me and everything else, and I've contacted some of our uh council members, not gonna point out who they were, but my thing is, is it's time for us to take back this city and to quit having the corruption that we have. And uh it all falls under, why did we let Todd go for a month with no pay? That's it.
Alright, any questions or comments? Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll be taking that bill up in just a couple minutes. That's all we had signed up, next item is. You're not on the document, do you have a comment to make?
Yes, I do, I I can't.
No, you have, you have to make it, if you could just identify.
I've been here uh a couple of times, I didn't realize I had to sign it. My name is Don Boes, and I'll make this very quick, I live at nine hundred Maywood Drive. I don't have any eggs in this hunt, except I just think the majority of the residents of Jefferson City are on the this side of the river, I think a site needs to be on this side of the river, that's all.
Could you just clarify your last name?
Boes, B-O-E-S.
Thank you.
That's my copy.
Any questions?
Thanks. Thanks for being here. Thanks.
Yes, sir?
Thank you. Mayor, uh this will be much shorter than the last time I was here.
Just identify yourself.
Mel Cal, I live on the east side, Mel Calow. It's not German, it's Czech. We're breaking the same bar. I want a second, most of what you heard, uh I will not cross the river. I like what happened over at the present site, it's been run better than ever. The people are there, and they come out and check people's location, and I'm happy with what they do. There's other politics involved, I will say this, I try to keep what's it, what's in the paper in mind. And I haven't been to the meetings on this, and I haven't been to the subcommittee meetings, that's my fault. But this bid process smells. There's a smell to it, and I think you would be wise to table this, I think the paper should be given the chance to give us more information, possibly put it off another uh two, three, four weeks. By now, there's something that stinks about it, and we got enough stink in this city, we don't need anymore. But we, one thing about where it is now, it doesn't stink, it doesn't bother anybody, but it's right in the middle of, what, eighty percent of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. That's everybody. Alright, we're gonna move to item ten, consent agenda. Thank you. Emotion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
First? Alright. We don't have any bills introduced tonight, that takes us to item twelve, bills pending first world twenty twenty-three dash zero four one.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapter nineteen motor vehicles and traffic by the addition of parking spots on Dunkland Street and Marshall Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Mayor. As clerk indicated, this will create some additional parking uh spaces on Dunkland and Marshall area there by Lafayette, and uh this was, came through our transportation traffic committee, and uh they recommended approval.
Questions or comments? Alright, we need a roll call book. Councilman Allers.
Mr. Marash, did you have, was there a a previous uh diagram of what it would look like in that area before? Was that under one of the public works, subcommittee meetings and all that, where these parking spots will be added and all that?
I think it's under uh, I think the Transportation Traffic Commission should have some of those in the packet, but I don't have them here.
Thank you, Ryan.
I I think they have been put out. Think towards general agreement, councilman.
I'd just say, I think that would be helpful if, in these circumstances, you would have that type of diagram, so we'd see it, it's much easier than reading it out.
Okay, council, comfortable to go to roll call?
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Alright, item B is twenty twenty-three dash zero four two.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with GWH Landscaping Contracting LLC in the amount of seventy-nine thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty cents for the Creek Bank stabilization Lake Valley Drive project.
Thank you, Mayor. As clerk indicated, construction contract, and basically this will uh create a retaining wall where there's been uh some creek bank stabilization go on with roof rap, uh it's in a residential area, so it'll look a little better, and we are uh working with Cole County on this project. Be paid for out of the wastewater fund, sorry.
Councilman Mealy?
Thank you. Did this require a bid process?
What's that?
Did it require a bid process?
Um, yes. All these are bid, yes.
Also? Yeah, you have a follow-up, also? Alright, seeing no other questions, we need a roll call book.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Bill Passus?
Alright, good. Item C is twenty twenty-three dash zero four three.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Corte Enterprises LLC for the operation of a public yard waste drop off and compost site.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as stated, this is a uh second reading of a a bill that authorized contract with Corte Enterprises, uh be awarded the yard waste drop off site composting service contract. So I've got a quick presentation I'll go through real quick, give you a little overview of the um the uh the bid, and also some of the process that went through. So just some of the details of the the contracts, so the bid uh was awarded, or excuse me, staff's recommending that the the contract be awarded Corte Enterprises LLC, they did score highest on the bid scoring process. The contract currently expires uh October thirty-first of this year, so it would be a five-year contract, um basically with automatic renewals uh going forward for each year, um automatically renewing, subject to appropriation by council for uh each new fiscal year. Year one cost be approximately a hundred ninety-five thousand, uh some of the highlights of the the contract, um be no cost to drop off or pickup of materials um for residents, uh which is same as the current contract. The site would change, as as I think we've heard tonight, so it is going to eleven twenty-nine Cedar City Drive. Some of the other um operations that will be changing a little bit is that uh residents can actually bring slightly larger lengths of limbs, so the limitation will go from four feet uh up to six feet to allow a little bit uh better accommodation um for residents. Right now, there's some limitations too for the city, uh the city does and can um take yard waste and materials, branches, park district to the site, um right now, but there is a current uh load limit for the city, it's thirty-five loads a year. The new contract proposal uh would remove any limitations, so city would be free to take unlimited amount of materials to the new site. They also remove that restriction for uh city uh drop offs on the size of limbs, so now the park district could actually uh take um limbs without any diameter restrictions. Right now, it's a six inch restriction, which would allow them to uh deposit fairly large uh materials, right now, I think they, they are required to grind up uh on their own, uh and they could do that with limbs up to ten feet length.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Councilman Lester?
So, right now, uh since parks in the city can't take those larger things, uh how's that handling?
So from my understanding, when speaking with parks, uh they do basically accumulate that materials, and occasionally they will also then rent their own machinery, grinder to actually grind that up. Uh I think they're averaging, I think from from just conversations about every other year, they're they're having to rent the machine to actually do the upgrade. So that cost savings uh would be realized basically with the elimination probably of that process.
You have a, you know what, what the cost been last year for that?
I did have that, I can't remember exactly, uh we can get that information on on that rental cost, I wanna say it was in the twenty thousand dollar range, I think, for for the rental of that machine, but I'll see if I can pull that back up uh before the end of this. Actually mentioned earlier too, so hours of operations, um that is changing from the current contract as well, uh just to put that in a little context, it's part of the RFP presentation, um we did look at expanding options and actually specifically soliciting ideas for reducing costs, and one of those specific recommendations or or uh items that we um proposed that could be altered was hours of operation, so reduced hours for for cost savings to the city. So the summer hours, uh as as stated in the contract, would be from March twentieth to November thirtieth, um and the the operations would be Monday, Thursday eight to seven, with uh with a closure of six P M. on Friday, uh Saturday hours, eight A M. to four P M. And what was stated previously was correct as well, that the the proposal would be no, for no summer hours, uh excuse me, no Sunday hours uh during summer or winter, uh in addition in the the winter hours, the Saturday hours would also be eliminated. So the winter hours, which would be December one to March nineteenth, would be eight to five, Monday through Friday. And these are the three bids we did receive, this information is in the packet, um basically it illustrates uh each bid and their total cost to the city over the five-year contract. Corte Enterprises' bid was uh one million eleven thousand, uh which comes out for year one would be again a hundred ninety-six thousand with kind of an incremental increase each year, uh the other two um bids that were not uh did not score as high, or included there for a little context on the the total cost of that uh contract to the city. And just to also, just to kind of clarify a little bit of the process, there has been some questions raised, I think, um on the the timeline of it, uh some of the involvement of individuals, and also uh generally the process that it went through. So I thought I'd just run through a few things real quick, just to kind of clear, I think, some uh some of the questions that have been raised. So just the general timeline, um basically in March, uh March tenth, the RFP was released and then closed April twenty-seventh. And May was basically taken by staff uh scoring those bids. June second uh was the uh results were actually distributed to staff, and I bring that up uh also to to discuss uh Mr. Ray Wallace is involved with that. So Mr. Ray Wallace uh was employed by the city uh as a city forester, and he was involved in drafting of the RFP, which was then publicly uh released, uh and all applicants had uh the same public access to that document, and his role was to uh provide input on what the parks would actually like to see as part of the new proposal. His employment, he retired on April twenty-eighth, I believe, uh so he retired prior to the beginning of the scoring of the contract. So Mr. Wallace had no involvement in reviewing the bids, uh or no involvement in the scoring of the bids. He was retired by that time, and I could say from sitting in those processes, uh no preferential treatment was given to anyone based on former members uh of the city working at that establishment. It was based solely on the merits of each proposal uh and the scoring criteria that we used. So moving on, uh basically May again was the scoring, early June, um was uh when basically the scoring was completed and we reached out to Mr. Corte as the the highest uh score of the bids to begin discussions and negotiations on the contract. By late June, early July, we had initial terms draw drawn up for that. Mr. Corte did a requested amendment to that, so we did do some revisions and that drug out, process a little bit longer. By July twenty-first, uh the contract was complete, uh we had the signed contract in our hands by July twenty-fourth. So this was shortly after, I believe, the July seventeenth meeting where I think some of those first concerns were raised. Uh I would point out that at that point in time, we were very close to having a final contract. Unfortunately, given the RFP process, we were not able to release any information from the point of the scoring starting to when it first uh appeared on a city council budget. So it'd been from the first part of May till August seventeenth, which is the first uh point in time when uh the the results were actually publicly made known. So during that entire process, no information could be released generally, except we did make the decision to um alert the bidders uh once we had that final contract of the expected date the city council uh would hear that first reading. So given the timeline there, uh I would state that I think uh there's always probably room to to move a little quicker, but I think given the circumstances and a little bit of the complexity of this contract, uh the the period of time that we took to negotiate that contract, actually complete the contract, was about seven weeks, uh and I would think that would be a fairly reasonable timeframe. There's also a little bit, again, I think confusion on why there was no information released, uh and I think I just go back to what I said previously, in that with the RFP process, um that is not standard process to release that information, uh because the city is currently active in negotiating those contracts and releasing information, um would really undercut the city's position. So just again, to highlight the location uh of the the site, um we touched on this last time at a eleven twenty-nine uh Cedar City Drive, I can see access from highway sixty-three, fifty-four is on the lower right side of the corner of the screen, uh this is also included in the packet, kind of a schematic for how uh Mr. Corte anticipates the drop off of materials to the site uh would occur, and uh the the traffic routing in case they actually uh received uh more traffic than what that rapid hit. So with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions, I think Mr. Corte is also in attendance here, if there's questions specifically for for him uh in regards to his proposal.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Smith, Councilman Allers?
Mr. Smith, uh you said there was a limit on the amount of loads that came over now, it topped at thirty-five, have we exceeded that? Do you know of how, or is that something? Nothing I'm aware of, I don't think we have exceeded that, um and I think that's partially due to the the size limitation of limbs, uh so we probably would be taking more there if we had an unlimited size of limbs we could take there, but since that's the case, I think they have been storing materials off-site in Parks District, um and and not necessarily taking all those loads to uh to all seasons currently. And mainly, like I said, they're they're hand handling uh limbs and all that stuff, they've done some tree trimming or whatever on the side of their house, whatever they done, uh they're supposed to secure their loads like the dump trucks do and have a cover over it, or keep that from making this way off and onto our streets? Absolutely, so everyone's required or or uh expected to secure any type of loads when they're on the the public streets. Thank you.
That's woman Weisman.
Yes, uh in the past, we have, well specifically last year, we toyed with um not including this specific thing in the budget, and I know that we looked at a termination, the termination clause, and it just wasn't plausible. What's the termination clause in this one? Sorry, I should have asked.
Look at that, uh when I look through that and I can answer that, maybe we can get a little further down.
In the meantime, Mr. Corte, do you have any comments or any questions for Mr. Corte?
Do you want to come up there?
Yes. I'm Joshua Corte. You have questions?
I have a question. How do these two men know about the information that he said wasn't released during the bid tabulation process? That's what I'd like to know. And I have a lot of things I want to say tonight, my father-in-law went through this in this town about. My father-in-law went through this in this town about 17 years ago. He had a heart attack and died and I could see it in his face and he didn't have time to vindicate himself. So this has been exceedingly difficult. So this happened over Thanksgiving weekend, this has been really hard for my wife. And so, all the other things that were addressed are up to you all, it's whatever the citizens want. But when it comes to the slander, I do not want this contract unless, unless we settle these issues of slander as well as you can at this moment. So my attorney's telling me to take me about three or four years to settle this and about $50,000 per lawsuit, which is fine, but I can't do this, this is a short amount of time. And I don't want this contract if everybody thinks we cheated to get it. So for everybody in this town with the last name of Courtney, all my relatives, all my ancestors, you have to, you have to ask questions and at least make a good faith effort to figure out if the slander is true. So, I'm going to address some of the simple things from the first meeting that I didn't know to show up at these. So, I haven't been here, I wasn't here in the beginning. I don't need to buy any equipment to operate this site, I don't need any real estate, I don't need any permits. We process about 10 times that amount of material. Anybody that's been to Cedar City can see it. And that's why we process the big material, like this is just a thing that we do, it's a tree service. And we work in the whole region. So, I moved into this city, I brought, well, I brought six employees and now we have 20. So we have 20 employees, over a million dollars in payroll and we spend a lot of money in town. And we process a lot of material, so taking care of this contract, I don't need, I don't need anything to do it. I don't have to buy anything and none of that had anything to do with the bid tabulation. And I also want to say, I do not go on social media because I don't want to see the things that people post because I run a business and I know the things that people say about us aren't true sometimes and I don't want to think that about other people. But my employees have to because our attorneys told us we have to record this stuff. And so it's been really disappointing, but you know what, at the end, here recently, they showed me some things and I remembered why I live here, because a lot of people said they stuck up for us. And it's hard to do when somebody's accused, because in our country, when you get, when this happens and you get canceled, it takes years to clear your name and in the meantime, you're guilty until proven innocent, thanks to the industrial revolution of slander, which is social media. So, everybody that defended me that's listening to this, thank you, I won't let you down. I just can't personally prove these things for a while, for a few years. But I think there's some questions that your constituents have based on what they showed me. There are questions that people have, dirty little things, smelly things, I keep hearing these talking points. If there are smelly things, these things need to be said, they need to ask questions. But I wasn't in on those meetings, so I can't, I can't tell you, I can't tell you where Ray and I were when the bid tabulation meeting happened, but once we all find out when it was, then I can tell you where we were. We all have GPS tracking on our trucks, we have tracking on our phones. So, if everybody would like to see all of my emails ever to the city, release them, I don't care. All of our phone records, all of our texts, all my texts to Ray, let's just let all that stuff out because it's going to come out anyway. So you can all file, follow this on case.net. I understand now they post documents, so that's fine, over time, it's going to come out. But I, I do not want to accept this contract and keep the million dollars if even one person thinks we cheated to get it. So, I'm happy to do the work for the city if that's what everybody wants. I would also like to add one thing. It's interesting how many people get up and speak about the bridge, having come over and bought mulch from us and taken it back across the bridge. But the bridge is like, I understand, I have to drive across that thing every day, at the wrong time of day, it's intimidating. So, I don't want to discredit all that, but this has been, this has been hard to watch. But I found out, I have friends and if I was in a big city, I'd be anonymous, this would all happen and I would be this anonymously accused person and I wouldn't know anyone personally who would defend me. But this town is big enough to do business in, but small enough to have people defend you. So, I'm proud of everybody and I will, I will do the work, clear my name. You have any questions?
Councilman Hensley.
Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Courtney. Just a couple of questions. Did you put any thought into possibly coming up with a drop site on this side of the river? That seems to be a lot of people's.
I didn't, it didn't even occur to me. It's not that I could, I could, I'm sure I could. So when you do that, I thought about this, when you do that, you have to truck all of that material back across the bridge. So you're going to end up with even more traffic. So the thing about our site is, the reason we're there is there's this overpass and all that material. So we're shipping out maybe 20 tractor trailer loads of material a month and they just go up on the clover leaf and up north. And the other thing that's over there is all the noise. I could have a drop site, but it didn't like, that was never, that wasn't in the bid packet, so I didn't even think to include such a thing. So, and I, like I, I buy pieces of real estate. It's not, it's not a bad idea, but there's a lot of logistics involved in that, there's a reason why that costs more.
And then on the, on the hours of operation, I mean, I understand the people's concern about not being able to drop off during a big part of the year over the weekend and then sometimes have. Was there, I mean, is there a way to get more flexible on the hours of operation?
I'm not opposed to it in the winter. I, and so I was up front with them, if it involves even one hour on Sunday, we're not a bidder, not interested at all for any reason. I, I'm Catholic, I cannot, cannot do that for you. Winter hours, I don't, I don't really think, well, what are our winter hours? No, no, no weekends, I, I forget the months. I haven't thought about, I mean, I haven't actually looked at this since I submitted it. We lost a kid and then I've been trying to do my job. December 1 through March 19, my impression is there's not much going on during those months. I don't, I think the reason that those hours are short is we have to pay for staff and there's nothing going on. But I, I would think about it, but Sunday, not, not going to do that, I can't, I just can't.
Questions or comments?
I have an answer for Ms. Weisman. The termination is 120 days notice.
Thank you.
It's a loopback. It's for convenience.
I already run a site, so I don't care, I really don't.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no other questions or comments, you have 2023-043 in front of you.
I guess I will make a comment, so, you know, to Mr. Courtney, I feel awful about this situation. You do great work and it sucks. We, I wish we could have had more forethought in the process to where somebody at the city saw the concerns with driving across the river coming. Because I've had tons of constituent, I shouldn't say tons, but I've had a number of constituents reach out to me and it's a problem. And, you know, it's like, but you did everything fair and you followed the rules and, you know, we're supposed to show businesses that we're here to do business as a city. I just, I'm having a really hard time with it, but I appreciate everybody coming in and commenting and so.
Oh, yeah, I just want to thank, I see Mr. Shephardly here, Mr. Alfred and Mr. Courtney here too. And just want to thank them for their views on what may or may not have transferred and, or transpired. And I know that we were given a good timeline from Mr. Smith over there and to alleviate maybe some of the second guessing that may have come into our minds too and all of that. But a few things that come up to me is, one, it's if we are the stewards of the city's citizens' taxpayers' money, then the lowest bid will save us $300,000 roughly over the time period if it's renewed. And, but the second of all is also then a convenience thing that I've heard a lot of people about and not wanting to go over across the river. And one of the things that has been brought up is, that two people mentioned, is the state is going to be widening and doing a bunch of work over there. So that is another aspect they thought about, the hindrance of going over to your site. Nothing was wrong personally, it's just the idea of going across the bridge and then with the state wanting to add those lanes and other construction they want to do over there, that might be a problem. But, you know, so those are the things I have been thinking about is, as an elected official for the citizens' justice, $300,000 is my, is a lot of money to me. But also, we do have a lot of people that the convenience of where it has been and nothing has ever been said wrong with Mr. Shephardly and how he does work over there and in fact, does, you know, from what I understand, a very good job at it. And I know Mr. Shephardly personally, just from years of other stuff we were involved in. So I can't say anything bad against any one of you, not knowing you that well or Mr. Alfred that well, but I know Mr. Shephardly well and vouch for him very well also. So I'd like to thank you all for all being citizens up here, but that's the question I will hopefully think about is the $300,000 situation it is because of a big expense with our health insurance that's kind of.
Councilman Spencer.
Yeah, I also would like to say thank you to all three vendors that took the time to submit a proposal. I probably share a lot of the responsibility for your anguish as far as I, because I engaged the social, my constituents on social media to ask for further input on this process. So, my apologies for that causing undue harm to you and your reputation. I've had a lot of people speak on your behalf saying that you do, you're a man of your word and you uphold your end of, as far as any quotes or bids, you give customers, so. And I think we, the other two vendors are quality people as well, so. It's one of those times where, you know, elected official and you kind of got to take some heat in the seat, so to speak. So, but again, I appreciate everyone being here tonight and sharing your concerns, thank you.
Councilman Lester, then Councilman Wright.
So, Mr. Courtney, I've heard you do great work with the bid and I appreciate that you have capability to handle more capacity and things for the city that would have helped us out, would help us out that way too. Wish, you know, the contract instructed more to require some of the things that the citizens see are very important. I do, like I said, I've heard great things about what the quality of your work and the price has been right, so, thank you.
Councilman Wright.
Yeah, I just want to thank all three vendors for being here and, you know, appreciate, you know, you throwing your hat in the ring, Mr. Courtney. I think you do find work, I think, you know, that all three vendors here do find work. What I want to say is, you know, what I've heard loud and clear from my constituents is, you know, they want and need this service and this is something that's very important to them. And so, I think, we should think carefully about, you know, stepping back any amount of a service that we're providing. And so, you know, that's, that's what I've heard is especially in regard to no Sunday hours, that sort of thing. People work on their yards Saturday and Sunday on the weekends, that's when they work on their yards. And that's when they need the ability to have the service to be able to drive these things off. You know, I've heard a lot of comments, of course, about the bridge, like everybody else has. But I just think it's an important service and we have to expect to pay a little bit more. I mean, than obviously in previous contract with inflation and everything else that's gone up, to provide the same level of service, we're going to have to pay a little more. But I, you know, appreciate all the vendors and what they've done. Wish that we hadn't have had all of the issues that have come up on this. But regardless of that, I think at the end of the day, we need to be responsive to our citizens and the taxpayers of the city of Jefferson and giving them, you know, the best service that they, that they want and need for the, for this important thing.
All right, you have 2023-043 in front of you, roll call both, please.
Lester?
No.
Mealy?
No.
Schwartz?
No.
Spencer?
No.
Spicer?
No.
Weisman?
No.
Wright?
No.
Allers?
No.
Deacon?
No.
Hensley?
No.
Phil Phillips.
This is to item 13, informal calendar, 2023-040.
In order to the city of Jefferson, Missouri, adopting a budget and personnel classification plan for the city for the period of November 1, 2023 to October 31, 2024, and appropriating money in the city treasury to pay the cost of operating the city government during that period in accordance with the budget.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to allow that item to remain on the informal calendar.
All right. Number 14, resolutions, resolution 2023-24.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement with MoDOT in association of the American Rescue Plan Act for the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Mr. Marash, we're back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this would allow us to execute a grant with MoDOT for approximately $59,000 to help with offsetting the operational expenses at the airport. So, we have to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Marash. All right, Joe.
I'm going to say I move to approve.
There we go, a motion and a second. Other questions, roll call both, please.
Mealy?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Resolution adopted.
All right, and we've already done 2023-25, it takes us to item 15. No other presentations, item 16, no other presentation topics, no new business, take.
First to the yard waste conference contract. I propose to extend the current contract, negotiate to extend it for a year.
Councilman Hensley.
I think part of the conversation earlier was to maybe have a motion that would direct staff to take a look at the one-year extension of the current contract.
I would move to, direct staff to negotiate for a one-year extension for the current contract. For yard waste.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a motion and a second.
Maybe ask a clarifying question.
I'm sorry?
Just one clarifying question, would you, would you direct staff to extend under the current conditions or would you want there to be any changes to the basic form and structure of the current? I think it's helpful for us to know what the intent is.
The intent is basically the current contract, but realizing it's official year to negotiate.
So no substantial change to the requirements or scope?
I would say not, not at this time. I would think during that time, come around next year, we'll, we'll bid the contracts again.
The other thing I would add is that would also potentially have budget implications for FY '24 for us to consider as well.
At the point where we bring the contract approval back, we could probably deal with a supplemental appropriation for whatever the difference would be, because right now, what we have built into the budget is the year one. Because right now what we have built into the budget is the year one price for the Cordy contract is what's built into twenty-four. So I think that could come back with the contract extension and the supplemental for any difference at the same time necessary.
Councilman Schwartz.
What, what is the difference, do we know, current versus?
Between which two?
The current and the current contract.
You're, you're kind of talking apples and oranges though, I think, because there's a substantial price difference on the current contract for the current service provider and what they proposed for this particular RFP. So I'm pretty sure that the rate we are currently paying the service provider is fairly close to what the Cordy contract was on year one, but the pricing on the current service provider for the new contract was sixty thousand dollars additional for.
Be clear, we're not giving Mr. Shepherdley a year with his new provisions and price.
That would be the.
What we're doing is offering the ability to stay at the current pricing.
I, I think the instruction is for staff to negotiate a one-year extension, which quite possibly could have an additional cost to.
I'm, um, strongly against that. I, we did an RFP process for a reason. I think it should go back out to bid. I, that's to me is basically a no bid contract and I, I am strongly opposed to extending it. No, I'm, I'm a no.
We've got a motion on the floor. Is it at the current rate or for staff to negotiate?
To me, to me, I think it would have to be a negotiation, um, if it can be done at the current, uh, amount.
Sure.
But, but. My, I, my motion is to direct staff to, to negotiate to get the best price and, and conditions.
So no cap on?
That's the thing we do. It comes back and it's a lot more low to, to do that. And I think, I think the contractor would know that.
Councilman Wright, you're comfortable with that? You seconded it, did you not?
Yeah.
You're comfortable with that?
I, I'm comfortable with that. I mean, I think along with lo- those same lines, I think that staff should just go back to the current contractor and say, would you do an extension at, at the current rate for another year? Yes, yes or no? And then if the answer is no, then, you know, we have to, we have to negotiate from that.
Councilman Hensley, then Councilman with Wiseman.
Thank you. I wonder if, uh, Councilman, uh, Lester and Wright would be open to rather than a whole year, um, offering a month to month, uh, to the current contractor to give us perhaps a little bit of time to go through a more thorough process of finding a, uh, uh, a vendor through, um, a similar RFP process, but not being under the gun for the October thirty-first, um, deadline or contract expiration.
So I, I think if we did that, it, it costs us a lot more. I mean, they'd want a lot more, but I know, I, I had a prior discussion. Turned home and mouthless and, and was suggesting a six-month extension and, you know, he thought it, you know, should be a year if we did that. I don't know, is, is a six-month or a month mark? I don't.
So any of that, any of that would be possible, assuming that the, the vendor would be open to. The year, uh, kind of a, uh, that was a suggestion that I made, the year is kind of based on a different things. It's probably get a more competitive price than a month to month, uh, for that year. And then also with the thought of not switching a vendor during a essentially a growing season. Um, have one year with the current vendor.
Could reduce confusion for citizens as that use the service.
Um, if the council wanted to go less than a year, that is your prerogative. Uh, my suggestion at the year was kind of based on those two things, both negotiating power and then, uh, just trying to reduce the amount of confusion for the citizenry that use the service. That, that November first break, while not perfect, is really kind of nice because the main usage season is, is the, you know, the, the, the spring and then the early fall. Uh, you know, leaves are, leaves and grass is kind of the main thing for the student, so. Uh, but if, if the council want to go anything less than that, that's completely fine too.
If you get a motion and second on the table, was it your intention to amend that or? Councilwoman Wiseman?
I'd like to echo the comments of Councilman Schwartz. Um, we do have an RFP process for a reason and I don't want to thwart that. But in addition to that, this is an opportunity to look at the budget again. We have quite the deficit coming up as we pointed out. However, there haven't been the other corrections and this may be an opportunity for maybe just this year alone to use those funds to sort of plug some of those other deficits. And so, I, otherwise, if we don't think about that in the next coming budget meetings, I, I really think we'll be a pickle in the next couple of years.
Councilman Alers.
So, uh, I, yeah, just listening to the reasoning and all that to, to negotiate for a few months, I would, I don't know if I have a problem with that. I'd, I'd still think that, uh, we need, if this is going to get a better, better handle on our input to the bid, that, you know, a lot of the people that responded back to us want the weekend thing. So maybe in light of this is a new RFP, we, we will get to state, you know, it's going to have to include Sunday hours and all that stuff to give us a little bit more say so in it as hindsight being what it is now. I think that's the most reasonable thing we should do. Uh, maybe go by just a couple of months with this until we can get a new RFP, start it out for the next year. And that gives us plenty of time to award the contract and then have them start. I know it starts after a, another fiscal year in October, but it just didn't seem right sitting there listening to this that we've left Mr. Alford out of it, uh, and we're just going to solely do with Mr. Shepherdley. Uh, so I've been, I, I.
To clarify, the motion on tables to extend, it doesn't talk anything about the RFP, to extend the current agreement for a year at the best terms that could be negotiated. Councilman Mealy had his hand up, then Councilman Schwartz.
I kind of like the month to month idea because I agree with some of my colleagues here that the RFP process is important and it gets, you know, it's designed to get the city a good product. After everything that's went down, we're coming into the fall season, probably the busiest time for the yard waste sites. And I, with, with what we've seen with, with citizens' needs for this site, uh, I think it's important to have, I understand the concern, the budgetary concerns as well, you know, so I'm not lost on that, but, uh, I, I, I think that a month to month would be quite more palatable and, uh, and then see where we are.
Are you proposing an amendment?
Yeah, yeah, if we could just.
You meant to clarify for us then what your amendment is. The motion on table is to
So it's to direct.
instruct staff to negotiate.
Right, you're right.
On your extension.
Yeah, so it's to direct staff to, um, discuss with the current provider a month to month extension and, uh, and then present those numbers to council, you know, this isn't, we're approving any spending right now. It's to come back to us with a figure and see if it makes sense.
You want that each month?
I would probably defer, I don't think much on that, but that would seem reasonable.
If there's a proposed amendment on the table. There are no seconds.
I'll, I'll second that if, if the, uh, original motion makers are not going to accept that.
Yeah, for a minute.
If, if they're not going to accept that as an amendment to their motion that's currently out there, then I'll second it to get a vote on it.
We've got a motion and a second then to amend the original motion to convert it from it. Negotiate a one year to negotiate a month to month. Councilman Schwartz.
Yeah, um, and I understand what Councilman Mealy's trying to do and it's, I think it's laudable, but I, I don't know how practical it is due to the fact that, you know, whoever the contract is has to have staffing, et cetera, to, to do this. And I think on a month to month basis, not knowing if you're going to have to hire somebody or fire somebody is, I think at a minimum it needs to be six months, which I'm not going to amend his amendment, um, because I'm still in opposition to the idea in general, but, uh, to Councilwoman Wiseman's point, I mean, to me, a compost site is something that is great when you can afford it, but I don't think it's a core function of government. Um, I think folks will be willing to pay a small fee, uh, to have the convenience of the location. And, uh, because of that, I'm going to be voting no on all of it, so. But, uh, I think there's two hundred thousand reasons of streets and law enforcement and fire that we could be spending this money on, so that's just my two cents.
All right, you've got an amendment on the floor to amend the original motion, which would take it month to month. Any other discussion on that? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
I'll read, is it a no? Everybody comfortable with that? All right, we're back to the main motion, which is to instruct staff to negotiate a potential one-year extension at best terms.
I'll just, I'll just say this service is used by a lot of citizens. It has a lot of value, performs, uh, uh, extending the life of a landfill, keeping, uh, uh, keeping the, the storm drains clear. It's used by both citizens and, and the city itself. It's, it's a very popular service and, and valuable service to our community. Let those comments.
Councilman Spencer and Councilman Schwartz.
Have we ever had any discussions with the, uh, trash contractor that collects our waste here in the city? To, because it's an advantage to them that these products don't go into landfill. Have they, have you ever had any conversations of saying, hey, would you be willing to kick in some dollars to, to extend the life of the, of the, uh?
I think the, yeah.
You're wrong.
RFP was sent out to, out our public waste bid on it, just like anybody else. Main part of their issue is their landfill is not equipped to, to process, uh, yard waste. So that's why they did not respond back.
And I understand that, but I'm just saying, why wouldn't yard waste, the yard waste contractor, not the yard waste, the trash, leg law or, or, or like Republic, yeah, whatever it is this month. Um, why they wouldn't want to contribute to, like, fund, make a donation to the city somehow to say, hey, this is our contribution to extend the life of the landfill site? Because again, it is advantageous for them to not have those products going into the landfill.
Yeah, I think that would be an option definitely for the next. They process again with the Republic Waste coming up short.
I, I'm not, I'm not aware of that conversation having taken place.
I think that ought to be a, a requirement maybe on the RFP for them to get the all right, I keep saying yard, uh, trash collection. Here it says. Thank you.
Councilman Schwartz to Joe. All right, you have the motion in front of you. We're going to do a roll call vote.
Schwartz?
No.
Spencer?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Wiseman?
No.
Wright?
Yes.
Allers?
Yes.
Deacon?
Oh, yes.
Hensley?
Name.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Yes.
Seven yeses, three noes.
Okay, so motion passes.
That will come back to, to council as a cost and then we vote on that too.
Well, that'll be our plan is to bring back that, right, to the council. I would say it's probably likely though, it would be after the termination of the current contract. So there could be a law, because we have two October meetings to accomplish that and October thirty-first, the current contract.
Can we put a deadline on that? I mean, it, it's relatively one-on-one conversations here. I mean, I think we should be able to streamline this pretty easily. He either's in or out, so.
Then it would be up to council to suspend rules if they decided to.
Yeah, I, I do not want for, for, for our citizens, I don't want any kind of law to, if, if we can, you know, accomplish that. Thank you.
And then you'll loop, that's fair, and Councilman Hensley into that for the budget impact. All right, it takes us to item eighteen, closed session.
Pursuant to section six, ten dot zero two one of the revised statutes of Missouri, the chair will enter between a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following. Attorney calling up privilege, section six, ten, oh, two, one, subsection one, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting a particular employees, section six, ten, oh, two, one, subsection three, an individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, section six, ten, oh, two, one, subsection three, is there a motion?
Motion to go into closed session?
Say it.
We've got a motion, second, then roll call vote.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Up here.
Motion passes.
Mayor?
Right.
Mayor.
My suggestion is we take the meeting over there.